Would you please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're pleased you're here this evening. We have a very busy legislative agenda this evening, so, okay, let's get right to it. Please call the roll.
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Seeliger.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes for the meeting that was held on April 17th, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The motion carries as, and minutes will be approved as presented. Okay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Controls, an application for a Class D-1, D-2 Liquor Permit, a transfer from Kroger in Upper Arlington, Ohio, to R. Kroger at 1094 North Main Street. And then also, I distributed to you prior to the meeting, a listing of budget transfers to be made for this month, and those transfers need your approval.
Thank you. Kay, is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries the budget transfers are approved as presented.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Kay. Do we have any special recognitions this evening, Mr. Mayor? Very good. Thank you. Well, we, at this point, would welcome anyone in attendance this evening that is interested in addressing city council in this section under lobby visitation to do so. Kay, has anyone signed up tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in attendance who would like to address council? Okay, very good, thank you. We will move forward with our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. We have a variety of proclamations this month, beginning with the Declaration of National Bicycling Month. So will the members of the city's Bike Bicycle Safety Commission please come forward to receive And with us this evening is a familiar face here, and Dr. Steve Langendorfer, who chairs the Bicycle Safety Commission, as you well know. Maybe it's less known that here is Karika Buckz. She's the vice chair of the Bicycle Safety Commission and a student at Bowling Green High School. And actually, I think in Dr. Langendorfer's absence, maybe next month, you're going to be chairing the commission. So, way to go, Karika. We've done this a number of years, a few times. And so, I'm not going to read through all of this in the interest of time, and I hope you'll forgive me for that, but I am just very pleased, on behalf as members of city council and the Bowling Green City Government, the citizens of Bowling Green, to declare the month of May, 2017, as National Bicycling Month. And I know you will be returning, I think even next month possibly, or representations from the Bicycle Safety Commission, because we'll be doing the Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year, hopefully. Okay, see, you've got an item for your agenda already, so, okay, Karika. But no, I'm very pleased, and thank you so much, to you and the members of the commission, all that you're doing, and I know, you know, I can't, you're a member of the commission too, so, okay.
There are several.
Does she really?
I'm a bicycle helper, too.
No wonder I'm tracking her down. Okay, Kristin Ottley, way to go. She'll be jumping up here before we, you have a chance to sit down, she'll be coming back up here. But in any event, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the city government, to give you this proclamation and declare the month. Bicycling Month and Bowling Green Bicycle Safety Month, you're around, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your leadership. Also tonight, I wish to call attention to the Declaration of Small Business Week, beginning today and ending on the 7th of May, and I believe that Mary Hinkleman is here. Mary, in the back room, and also Erlene Kilpatrick here, representing the Chamber of Commerce, our, the managing director of Downtown Bowling Green and the executive director of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce. And again, in the interest of time, I'm not going to, all my little notes here and so forth, but pleased to present you with this proclamation, declaring this week, Small Business Week, City of Bowling Green, keeping with the national declaration. So, thank you for all that you're doing, Downtown Bowling Green, for the Chamber of Commerce, all of your constituents and your respective, and you keep them happy at all Thank you very much for all that you're doing. Yes, no, please.
We just want to make our audience and those in our community be aware that small business in our community is truly a huge backbone of who we are as a community. And we encourage you, not only this week, but many weeks throughout the year, to support our local small businesses, and we want to thank you.
And you had a good weekend. I understand that the rains, I had to be out of town for a special family engagement, but I understand that the rains stayed away on Saturday, so you had art walk in Downtown Bowling Green.
It was wet.
It was wet, oh, okay. And you had lots of visitors in town, I know, with soccer and university-related events and so forth, so we hope they're found our way to some of our businesses in Downtown Bowling Green and throughout the whole of our communities. Thank you both very, very much for your leadership. Appreciate it. Additionally, there will be a special proclamation presentation event this Friday at Crim School, Arbor Day, and another on May 10th at Four Corners for National Travel and Tourism Week. I wish to call, this is a very selfish little promotional plug here, so forgive me, I wish to call special attention to the Bowling Green Area Community Bands Day this Saturday, and a 10th anniversary concert for the Bowling Green Area Community Bands, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Bowling Green Performing Arts Center. It will also feature BGSU alumnus Captain Ryan Nolan, Assistant Director of the President's Own United States Marine Band, and a native of Ohio, and a graduate, as of course, of BGSU, as I said, the Defiance Community Band, and the North Coast Concert Band, which kind of operates out of my hometown of Bellevue, Ohio. If you enjoy super-good band music, I encourage your attendance at Saturday night's Festival of Community Bands, beginning, as I mentioned, at 7:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center. As you may recall, one of our citizens was recently named as one of four recipients of the prestigious Jefferson Award, presented by the American Institute for Public Service in Toledo on April 13th. May I invite forward Antron Moore, better known as Coach Juice, along with Kristin Ottley, who will tell us about a very special event at the Bowling Green Community Center on May 13th. And Antron, we've been visiting, but publicly, I just want to say congratulations to you. You've made quite an impact on our community, on the region. You've been recognized now in Cleveland, your hometown of Chicago. Word is traveling fast about all of your good work for stroke awareness, and we really commend what you're doing, and Mrs. Ottley's going to tell us now all about what you're going to do, and you're welcome to speak as well, to tell us about what we're going to do on May 13th. Antron, congratulations again. And incidentally, this, the Jefferson Awards, it was a big deal, the Toledo Blade, at full-page, you know, notices, and there were a number of people nominated throughout the region here, and he was one of four that was, actually, received this award. It's a big deal. And last year, the award winner happened to be another resident of Bowling Green, and I'm referring to, well, in the front. See, Antron, you're always coming to my, you know, save me here. Jeff Wilbarger, who we, he was here last year, former city council as well, and he's a high school math teacher in Silverton, the daughter project, and I think you've got to meet Jeff, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Sure. Flyers for you all, council, so that'll save time for my report later, because I'm doing this now. But we are very, very happy. Antron has been working for us in Parks and Recreation, working specifically with our youth basketball program, and just does an amazing job. I mean, you see him, and he smiles, and all the kids smile, and it's just been phenomenal. So, he came to us and wanted to kind of give back, and obviously, work with his platform of stroke awareness. So we have put together an event on Saturday, May 13th, as the mayor said, at the community center, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we're calling it "Antron Juice Moore's Stroke Awareness and Basketball Celebration Event." Antron is going to be putting on a youth skills clinic and challenge right at the beginning.
Right.
Okay? And we're going to, Wood County Hospital is partnering with us, they are going to be there doing some blood pressure screenings and having some information out to educate you on stroke awareness. And the biggest part of the program that Antron has been working tirelessly on, shaming some people, I think, into playing, is a celebrity basketball game that'll be at 11:30 in the Wood Lane Gym there. And we're using the celebrity term kind of loosely, I think, for some people, like myself playing, or trying to play. But our coaches are true celebrities, because one coach is Mayor Edwards, and the other coach is Councilman Seeliger. So, true celebrities there. Just a few other names you might recognize, Teresa Gavron, Randy Gardner, Robin Short, Alexis Rogers, former BGSU women's basketball player. I will not be guarding her, I'm taking, I call her Teresa. She's my neighbor. Anthony Stacy, a former Bowling Green State University men's player, Kurt Cowan, also a former player who happens to be employed by the City of Bowling Green as well. Superintendent Scroochy, I don't know, I might guard him. That could be fun.
He'd be my assistant coach.
Sure. No, he's playing.
He would.
Yeah. And Antron, I think coerced someone else into playing. You want to share that? I didn't get him.
Jerry Anderson, I know y'all know who that is, for WTOL. He's going to play also.
Good.
And lots of other folks that you may or may not know, that Antron has connections with. We will have some heart-healthy snacks there, and there'll be book signings, right?
Yes.
Celebrity meet-and-greet, and lots of other fun. I know anytime in May is super-busy, but please, please, please come out, if nothing else, to cheer on some of our celebrities, or heckle, or whatever you want to do. But Antron's going to speak as well.
Please, please come out, because this is going to be the first time ever, something like this being done of this magnitude, a stroke survivor like myself, if you look it up, you can Google it, you can go on YouTube, I'll be the first stroke survivor that's going to actually play in this game, and y'all are the first to hear that. I don't know how well I do, but all the glory goes to God, because, you know, at one point I wasn't able to walk or talk, and that's why I give back so much, because I just want to make a huge impact, and I've been making a huge impact across the world, and so, I just want to thank y'all for listening to me, and I get this lady right here all the praise, because she always looking after me.
Antron will play better than me, I promise you that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Antron, Kristin. We're going to shift gears just a little bit from, to a topic that's been before us here on a continuing basis, and that's the Nexus Pipeline issue. I deeply appreciate your understanding and support of my efforts to focus on some of the more pertinent basic scientific facts involved with the Nexus Pipeline issue, especially its proposed physical location and proximity to the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant and the Bowling Green Fault Line, a geologic fact. At the risk of stating the obvious, when a charge is made or a concern registered on a basis of scientific fact that the proposed pipeline is a threat to the future of Bowling Green's water supply, one would be extremely and terribly remiss not to investigate the potential underlying issues more thoroughly. Therefore, in recognition of our community's substantial investment in our plant and the importance of a safe and clean water supply, I have been pursuing some independent lines of inquiry with knowledgeable sources and trying my best to sharpen the focus on the issue of water quality in relationship to the proposed pipeline. Toward that end, I have sent letters to our elected representatives in Washington, who in turn have facilitated communications with the federal, excuse me, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. To help with the issue of focus, fact, and unanswered questions, I have arranged for a panel of experts to participate in a public forum for the benefit of both the members of council and the administration and the public at large, next Monday, May 8th, at 4:00 PM, and these chambers with a 5:30 ending time, if that's possible. The panel will consist of Dr. Charles Onash, retired professor and chair of geology at Bowling Green State University. Dr. Onash is an expert in structural geology and digital mapping, and numerous other areas of research, including the BG Fault. Also serving on the panel will be Mark Baranowski, who recently retired from the Ohio Geological Survey and whose research is frequently cited in relationship to the geology of this region. Another panelist will be Dr. Andrew Kerr, Assistant Professor of Political Science at BGSU, who has an academic background in geology with a specialization in hydrogeology and a research focus on energy politics and policy. Dr. Kerr has a dual appointment between the Departments of Political Science and Environment and Sustainability. He has written two research reports identifying risks and threats from the Nexus Pipeline Maumee River Crossing. The fourth panelist is Dr. Steve, excuse me, is Steve Champa, Senior Hydrogeologist with Egan and Associates of Worthington, Ohio. Mr. Champa is a graduate of the Ohio State University with over 28 years of experience in hydrogeology specializing in public water supply development. Serving as the panel moderator will be Steve Kendall of WBGTV and host of the Northwest Ohio Journal. In order to make the most of the time and the expertise of time and the expertise of the panel, I am proposing that questions of the panel be submitted by you or through you by this coming Thursday for sharing with the panelists and the moderator in order to allow sufficient time for preparing responses. I will be doing the same, and that recognizes that there may be something significant that will come up in the course of the discussion that will generate another question or more than one. At the conclusion of the forum and after further discussion, I hope we can formulate a joint letter from both the administration and council to our elected representatives in Washington and FERC, and to be sure to Nexus, which will identify in a very focused manner unanswered questions as well as specific concerns related to the proposed pipeline, including the need to further assess an alternative route for the proposed pipeline. Mr. President, members of council, this concludes my report, unless you have questions for me. And thank you very much for listening and your help.
Thank you. Are there questions for the mayor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for arranging the forum. I think this is a great development. As I feared, I've been seeing this coming, and I arranged a trip about six months ago that will fall on that date, be gone from the 2nd through the 12th. But I had heard this will be filmed, will the forum be filmed?
I don't believe so, unless, I know, we might be able to tape it.
Great.
That is an audio tape of it, but we don't have any plans right now, unless Steve would arrange something with WBGTV, but...
Oh, okay, that was my misunderstanding.
That would be the only possibility, and in fact, I'm meeting with him tomorrow at 11 o'clock to go over some of these very details and that, to see what we can possibly work out. But I would, I would hope at the very least, we will have an audio tape of the discussion and that. And please, John, knowing, and I didn't know that you were going to be out of town, I apologize, that it's tough to hit these when everyone...
So many people involved.
But please, don't hesitate to share your, any questions that you might have with me or another one of your fellow members of city council, and we'll do our best to get the answers.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank you for your efforts in really, you know, everything that's gotten us to this point, you know, with the forum that will take place on Monday. I think that certainly you've exhibited a desire to seek facts and have been really proactive in trying to accumulate information that's going to benefit all of us in understanding, you know, the proposed pipeline. I would just like to take a minute to emphasize, you know, to all the people in attendance or people that might see this broadcasted, to please do forward to us any questions that you may have that you would like us to present to this, to this board, I think, or to this forum. I think that obviously there are a number of, or that all of the people that will be represented that evening are very knowledgeable, and I'm hoping that we can get some questions from those concerned members of the community that we can present to them and take advantage of their being here that day to discuss this very important matter with us. So please, I'd be anxious to receive questions and be willing to pass those on to the panel on Monday. Are there additional questions for the mayor? Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. I've heard from a few of you about the state law that went into effect at the beginning of this year regarding the operation of a low-speed, slow-speed vehicle on public streets. Probably, when I've heard from most of you, you've talked mostly about the operation of golf carts, and we've heard this discussed in other regional communities and wanted to provide some information to you this evening about that. As we mentioned, the law went into effect at the beginning of the year, and our stance at the time of passage was to notify the public of the law change, which we did via a press release in April, and to gauge the public's desire to allow this or not. And as all, or several of you have, we've discussed this, we've heard from residents wanting us to look further into this matter. So, up to this point, our communication with folks with whom we've spoken, and our message to you tonight, is that we are open to working with the community on a proposal that addresses safe and appropriate uses of these vehicles in the communing, community, while remaining in compliance with state law. The state statute stipulates that certain criteria must be met in order for the vehicles to be authorized, and one such criteria is an inspection program. The inspection shall be conducted by a local law enforcement agency verifying that the vehicle has certain elements such as seat belts, lights, turn signals, a horn, and other requirements, thereby making it safe to travel on the public streets. I want to state that these vehicle requirements are established by state statute and not by city ordinance, and this morning had an opportunity to talk with President Osbacher and communicate that the administration will work on drafting some legislation for your consideration that would authorize this use, and talk about the inspection program. We'll work with the Bowling Green Police Division on that matter, and we will present that to council once we have a draft for you. So, any questions on that topic before I transition to another one? Right, fantastic. Well, I, speaking of the police, I have a great privilege this evening in that we have three new officers with the Bowling Green Police Division, and it's been a while, Tony, since we've had new officers to introduce, hasn't it? Three years. So this is a really exciting time for the City of Bowling Green. We are certainly so proud of our new officers, but I want to give the honor of introducing them to Chief Hetrick. So, Tony, if you'd please join me here at the podium.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. President, members of council, I think it's important that when we hire a new officer, that we bring them out here so that, I think it's important that the community get to know their police officers, and this is a good first step for us, so. These three officers have all recently graduated from the Ohio State Highway Patrol Basic Peace Officer Training Academy. That was a 16-week school, and then they completed 12 weeks of field training here with a Bowling Green Field Training Officer. They are now released to solo patrol, and you're going to be seeing them out and about, primarily on the evening shifts, as they're new, most of them end up working nights. First of all, I'd like to introduce Officer Vincent Snyder, Vinny, as he's known. He's from Bowling Green and is a graduate of Bowling Green High School and Bowling Green State University. He graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in History in 2008. Prior to working for the BGPD, he was employed by the Wood County Educational Services Center as a site coordinator for the STARS program in the BG City Schools. He has been assigned to the midnight shift. Officer Amber Moomi. Amber is from Graytown, Ohio, and a graduate of Oak Harbor High School and Defiance College. She graduated with a Bachelor of Science in a dual major, forensic science and criminal justice, in 2016. She comes to us directly from Defiance College, where she was actively involved in athletics and community service volunteering. She has been assigned to the midnight shift as well. Officer Ryan Sellhorst. Officer Sellhorst is from Ottawa, Ohio, and is a graduate of Ottawa Glendorf High School, Rhodes State Community College with an associate degree in criminal justice, and is also a BGSU graduate, also with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. He graduated in 2015 from Bowling Green State University. Prior to working for the Bowling Green Police Division, he was employed as a police officer in Ottawa, Ohio, where he served for four years as an officer, so he's got some experience, and he is going to be working the afternoon shift. So, yeah, we're very excited to have these officers fully on staff now and operating. We're up to 40 now, 40 sworn officers, and we're in the process of hiring an additional one to bring us up to our strength of 41, so thank you, Mr. President, appreciate this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Bowling Green. Don't be there later. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
I can't wait.
I'd like to say, thank you to all of the new officers, welcome them to Bowling Green, and thank them for their service.
Thank you very much, Chief. And that completes my report, although I will note that Brian Kraft is not here this evening, I don't think, unless he snuck in on me. So if you have any questions regarding his operation, I can try to answer them.
Other questions for Lori? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. It's really hard to follow all this wonderful news, but I will try my best. Since we last met, we had the Court Street Connects event a little over a week ago. We thought it went really, really well, and really appreciate everybody in this room that was involved. Appreciate you all who I know were there at one time or another, whether it's volunteering or just enjoying the festivities. As you recall, this project was important because it was voted by the community as the first early action plan that we were going to implement, and we feel we did a great job representing the community, and of course, with your attendance, that helped. The Better Block Project, was originally what it was called, was envisioned to advance the goals of the cap and really strengthening those community connections, recognizing and promoting our local assets, identifying potential long-term neighborhood improvements, so we really think we did a great job of involving all kinds of people with that. I can't thank everybody, because I will miss somebody, but certainly, we had wonderful city staff support with this, departments, divisions that were there, president helped us set up, helped us clean up, all the businesses and organizations that were part of this. We had a wonderful planning team that did not miss any detail, that just, you know, rolled their sleeves up and got to work, and we had well over 30 volunteers that were there all day, which is even more wonderful, and people that actually lived on Court Street that were impacted by this event, which is amazing. We also had some really great news as part of this. We had 150 bike helmets we gave out, thanks to the Bicycle Safety Commission. I mean, this was like one-on-one service, show up with yourself, your child, and they really fitted the helmet on you, so I thought that was really, really wonderful. We actually got that grant from the Ohio Academy of American Pediatrics, Put a Lid on It program, and BGSU Reckon Wellness, so again, a lot of partnerships. I think we've already heard a lot about the $900 that we generated from actually creating pallet furniture out of recycled pallets by BGSU Construction Management students, graphic design students, and our master gardeners helped within the community, and, you know, selling all this furniture was really amazing, to see that, with little to no investment with that. We also had a simple thing, straw bales were donated by a university staff person. Well, those were able to be used as seating, but also, they're now going to be reused at... the obstacle course behind the community center. So, again, another partnership, we're able to get an item for free and then reuse it, really thinking outside the box. We also had three dogs that day adopted from the Maine Society. So, that's a really great feeling type of story from this event also. We had almost 20 people that had never been in the courthouse before that took a tour about our rich history, that beautiful building. Another great, exciting thing, had a lot of people ask, you know, "Gosh, I wish we had more times, I wish it was open longer." A lot of people really liked that. We were also recognized by the International Town Gown Association for the event. They had it in their latest newsletter, and they actually invited us to come speak at their next conference about the event. So, that's more good news, they were really excited to see that. And the bike lane, we actually got some data recently from our MPA students who worked on that. Before the bike lane installation, after three hours of observation, they found three instances of bicycle lane use, so about one bicyclist per hour that they were there. After the bike lane installation, after about six hours of observation, they found 33 instances of bicycle lane use, so about five and a half, loosely say that, bicyclists an hour. So, that was certainly an increase with the bike lane installation. Also important to note that we didn't change any of the traffic patterns on Court Street. It was the removal of parking that certainly inconvenanced residents, but we thought it went pretty well. We tried to really find some alternative scenarios for that, so just wanted to give you a little bit of that information. Overall, just really impressed by the partnerships and just wanted to really thank everybody involved. So, you can continue to help by filling out the survey. Again, we had MPA students work on a survey, did it all on their own, and that's a Google Doc that is on our Facebook page, so we would love to get feedback on that. In other cap news, we're still working on the Good Neighbor Guide, it's a living document, and Camero's hopes to have another edit done by the end of the summer. In addition to that, we found it's not user-friendly as far as printing it, it's about 20 pages. So, we're looking at doing a very small document that gets rid of some of the details, just the basic information, so that way anybody can print it. If a landlord wants to print out 20, they can do that. Right now, it's just not cost-effective and not cost-effective for us also to do so. I also have a copy of the timeline of the project, so you get an idea we're about halfway through. Camero's right now is currently working on the project, the draft plan, and by the end of the summer, they hope to have something out into the public and getting that reviewed. On other, maybe less exciting news, our permits are pretty high this year compared to last year, we had 105 permits as of today. Our phone's just been off the hook compared to 86 last year. We've had 15 single-family housing starts compared to nine at this time last year. So, it's really a hot market right now when it comes to these single-family housing that we're seeing, and we've heard the construction costs are really high right now, and it's just definitely impacting the market. But I've heard houses selling in two hours, six hours, two days, very quickly, and I think just Bowling Green must be the hot place to be. So, that's really great for Bowling Green. But if you have any questions, let me know, I just wanted to give you an update on those items.
Very good, other questions for Heather?
Heather, no questions for me, but I just want to say while it was a massive team effort, you worked very hard on this event, and I just wanted to thank you publicly for it. It did a number of great things for us, and it really put the spotlight on a beautiful neighborhood in Bowling Green, not to mention the almost $900 that we raised for Ridge Park and the bike lane. I've heard from a number of people who were sad it was only up for a week, and they want it up forever, so you can probably understand where they're coming from. But on behalf of them, behalf of myself, just want to say thanks again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. I will try to be quick, but it is May, and Mr. Marsh is going to give me his time, so. Summer registration started today for residents, and there are a couple of things closed already, but we have plenty of opportunities available. If you wanted one particular week swim lesson at 5:30, you might be out of luck, should have been up at midnight online. But, but there's plenty of opportunity left. Hot things typically on day one are always swim lessons at 5:30 and Safety Town. But there's plenty of time to get registered until those programs start. So, we're excited about that. Non-residents begin on May 15th. Lots of things coming up, I'm very quickly just going to give you some highlights. We have a new family archery program that Mike Persekki is going to be doing on, I believe, Tuesday evenings, May 9th. It starts from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Coniat Haskins Park, and that is for families to come out and try our archery program. He's been doing a lot with middle school children, but this is an opportunity for the whole family to come out and check out this very, very popular sport. Couple of ribbon cuttings, I gave you flyers a while back, but just to remind you, and Earlene is here from the chamber, so this is good timing. But next, next week, May 9th, also at 4 o'clock, is our ribbon cutting for the Community Mosaic Project at the community center. So, we're very excited about that. It is up and installed, but that'll be the official ribbon cutting, and if you have not been out there, you need to go out there. I'm not sure I have the words to describe how awesome it looks. It's really, really nice. Save the dates for another ribbon cutting, the flyer will be forthcoming from the chamber, but our splash pad creatures are here, and they will be installed here very soon in time for the opening of the pool, but we will have an official ribbon cutting on June 7th at 1 o'clock, obviously at the pool. And stay tuned, we plan, plan to come out early and get your lunch at the concession stand. We'll have some special combos in honor of the splash pad that day. So, just save the date for that. We have a brand-new event coming up on May 20th, the week after the Coach Juice's celebration, the Saturday after. The second big event out at our obstacle course, and as Heather just mentioned, we very gladly took the hay bales. So, it is called the Super Dash. This is for kids, it's a kids' fun run and hero fest, and after they have the Super Dash, there will be a, kind of like a festival with music, crafts, games, contests, and food, and meet your kind of local heroes. So, we have Police and Fire, thank you, will be lined up and are lined up to be out there. So, should be a really, really fun time out at the obstacle course. We mentioned Coach Juice's event, so I don't need to do that. Next week, on Wednesday, May 10th, we have the 20th Annual National Employee Health and Fitness Day at City Park between 11:00 and 1:00. Get those out. And I'm going to switch to my helmet for bike safety and mention that the bicycle spokesperson applications are due today, so you have until 11:59. You can email that to me, there's some forms out front. We do have quite a few outstanding applicants actually that have been turned in, so Bike Safety Commission will diligently be looking at those tomorrow when I scan those PDFs to you. But coming up on Friday, May 19th, save the date for Bike to Work Day. So, the commission encourages you to bike to work or school on that day. And, other than that, my very last item, I have some special guests that are going to come up and help me talk about this. Bowling Green Parks and Recreation is partnering to put on a program with Girl Scout Troop 10799. That is a junior troop that I just happen to have helped lead for many, many years. But they are putting on an event, and I have some special guests here to help tell you about that. We have Paige Selzer, who's going to describe their bronze project and why they chose this, and Ella Estrousky, who's going to kind of tell you the details on the event. And council, I have flyers for you on that. And before we do that, do you have any questions of me? Because then I'm done, I'm going to let these ladies go.
Other question?
Kristin, I was looking sort of hurriedly through your monthly report the other day. It did appear to me that our pass sales at the community center are down fairly significantly from a year ago. Would that be accurate? Do you have any comment or?
That is, that is accurate. And we, we actually had some discussion about that a couple of months ago at our park board meeting, and we actually have sort of a, I don't know if I'd use the word strategic, but a plan specifically for some things that we're implementing out there. But to summarize that very quickly, there's a couple of factors in play, and we actually tracked exactly last year, because we also had that, there's more competition in town right now. Lot of places to go and to work out. So, that's, that's one of the factors. Silver sneakers is a blessing for the people that have it. It doesn't help us unless people actually show up and use it. So, in the past, some of those folks would actually purchase a pass, and they'd get it free at, I think, three different places, and I know some people that have free passes to all three places. So, we only get reimbursed for that when they come and swipe in. So, there's some things that we have in the works that we've already started, but to try to track those folks out and encourage them, yes, you still need to come and work out, not just because we care about your health, but also so that we can get reimbursed for that. But yeah, I mean, competition is, and competition is good, but it's those things. So, and there's more factors for that as well, but, but yeah, we have, we have some strategies in place, kind of work with that, and really also push our corporate pricing structure that changed last year that I know a couple of businesses have taken advantage of, and including finally our city employees being able to have a discount, because we as city employees have the same rights as every other citizen, so we don't get anything like that. But because we offer a corporate discount to other businesses, that's something that we just rolled out and let the city employees know about, and several have taken advantage of that. I know the city schools have taken advantage of that as well. So, any, anyone else that has a business with more than about 20 people, certainly talk to us, we've been trying to reach out to them as well. Yeah, you're right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paige Selzer. I'm a fifth grader in Girl Scout Troop 10799, and we are working on earning our bronze award. This is the highest award a Girl Scout Junior can earn, and we have been working on this award for two years. While working on this award, we earned our Get Moving Journey badge, where we learned about energy usage and conservation. We will finish this award with this project.
Hi, my name is Ella Estrousky. I'm here to tell you about our Fun and Fitness Frenzy Event that is taking place on Sunday, May 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the city park. This event is a free drop-in for ages 5 to 8. Children will participate in fun fitness activity stations with a small snack along with fun fitness facts. Parents are asked to remain on-site with their child during the event. For more information, please visit the Parks and Rec website.
Thank you, girls. Good luck in your project. Great job, thanks. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Well, we do have a report, but actually I have two things. Mike, when the mayor got back from vacation, he rescinded the raises, and he made me give the car back, so.
I did what I could do, Mike. I did, did what I could do.
Really disappointing, but, you know. I just want to mention you have before you an ordinance to authorize, really, Brian to enter into a contract or complete a contract that will result in expanding the, the Woodbridge Business Park. And I wanted to mention that, or thank publicly at least Dick and Judy Carpenter, who owned the property that's involved, because this is something that they didn't have to do, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure how excited they were about giving up farmland. If you know anything about farm people, you know that that's kind of foreign to their existence. But they're, they're supporters of our community, and they're huge supporters of our school system. They know that the current existing Woodbridge Business Park resulted in a lot of, of employment here in the city, which greatly helped us with, with the wage withholdings, but it also helped the schools. The schools take nearly a million dollars in tax money out of existing Woodbridge Business Park annually. So, sometimes we forget about that because we look at the payroll income tax, because that's what, you know, keeps this engine going. But that's also a big part of what's happened, so we really appreciate these folks doing this. At least the first portion of this option is undermarket so that we can get it going, and we appreciate them doing that for us. If you have any questions about it, I can answer them while I'm up here, but.
Other questions for Mr. Marsh?
Mike, no questions. It's funny, because you scared everybody when you came up there. You have such nice things to say, so thank you.
No, I'd just like to say, Mike, thank you for your efforts in, in getting us to this point with this ordinance that's in front of us today. I think that all of us are aware of the benefits that the city has experienced from the previous development of Woodbridge, and this, this project, to me anyways, just makes sense. Opportunity for Sue to go out, continue to market the area. This just seems like a very, the winning proposition for city, and we'll be happy to consider that ordinance tonight. But thank you, I know you've worked on it very long and hard, so thanks.
And Mike, I just want to say I hope you'll convey to Dick and Judy the appreciation from City Council that we have for their doing this for us. Thank you.
Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Two, two items. On May, or April, sorry, April 27th, we had a solar dedication for AMP and some elected officials, but we are planning a more local Bowling Green public dedication of the solar field on May the 20th, I believe it's at 11 o'clock, and Earlene is helping us through the Bowling Green Chamber, so thank you, Earlene. I'm sure we'll be getting out information through Joe's office here shortly to make sure people are aware that it's available to come out and see the site. We won't be able to go inside of the, the field, but you can pretty much get a view of, from, from outside the fence there. It's, it's, it is an amazing site, and the dedication we had last week was, was a very nice, nice event. Second thing is just an update on the Coniat Waterline Project. And this week, our plan is to do water service installations between Winter Garden and Tamarack. The week of May the 8th, we will need to close the intersection of Winter Garden and Coniat to get the water line across Winter Garden Street to the east side. This is kind of the last phase of the main water line extension. We started at the west end, and now I've worked to the east end, and we're kind of at that last, last staging point. Engineering and Public Works is working on the detour for the intersection, and again, Joe's office will be putting out information about the closure and detours and impacts to, to traveling public. We're hoping it will only take three days, but we're planning on a week as a worst-case scenario. But if everything goes right, we're hoping three days. Then the week of the 15th and the 22nd, those next two weeks of May, we'll be back to doing water service lines, where we'll be transferring people over to the new water line, and then the old one will be abandoned. We shouldn't forget with this project, this is kind of the first phase, so people always tell us, well, we should plan ahead and do utility work before we do a paving job, so there will be a paving project that's coming up after this. And we didn't want to see problems with, problems with the water line after the paving work had been completed. But in addition to that, there will also be a sanitary sewer, pump station, and force main project in the Coniat area. So, this, this area will still continue to see additional construction, just the water line was kind of the first, the first phase of that. So, that's our hope, is that by the end of May, we'll be done with water work on Coniat, and the next phase can kick off.
And we're still on target for the Coniat repaving project yet this fall, correct? After the completion of the pump project?
Yeah, I believe so, and if Mr. Kraft's here, he can give you more details about that than I can, but I believe they've got that under contract now, and it's, our, our goal is to be done by the 1st of June, which I think is when the contractor's planning on, on maybe coming into town, or when they were allowed to start, start their work. I've not been part of any kind of pre-construction meeting for the paving project, but our, our hope was to be done with our work in May. The sewer, sewer work, we're going to be outside of the paving, paving area for the force main and the pump station and the, and the gravity sewer. So, we shouldn't be impacting asphalt in those sections, but, yeah, but the asphalt work will start up here at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
Quick comment, there was a ceremony the other day for the solar field, and I just noticed that all the bigwigs that were there, knowledgeable people, they, they really seemed to pay more attention to Brian than anybody else there, and I just, I just had a sense that there was tremendous respect for you, and I know that we all feel that way about you, and it's just nice to see you get a little recognition there. Done a great job with the solar field, and we appreciate it.
Sure, thank, appreciate that. Thanks for the comments. My role was just a piece of everything that went into, out there, so I'm just happy to be part of it and glad to be part of the teamwork, so thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. That completes our official reports, and we move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Dunbridge Road. I have a resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Campbell Hill Road. I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation. of Transportation's preliminary legislation for the installation of marked crosswalks and other related equipment along East Wooster Street between Manville Avenue and Campbell Hill Road and declaring an emergency. And I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of miscellaneous equipment not needed for any municipal purpose.
Thank you, Bob. I have two ordinances from the Board of Public Utilities. First, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to complete terms and conditions of the property purchase agreement with R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership for expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency. And also, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the leasing of municipally-owned property for agricultural purposes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
From the Community Improvement Committee, I have a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended housing revolving loan fund program policy and procedures manual, and a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended community development block grant housing policy and procedures manual.
Thank you, Daniel. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
A couple of things I would like to remind everyone, that we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting on May 15th for our next meeting to discuss our general fund revenue situation. So I would encourage my council members to continue to listen to their constituents and to think, you know, pretty long and hard about this topic before that meeting. The way I'm sort of expecting things to go is that they'll certainly give the four members of council who are not on the Finance Committee a chance to be included and express their views on various items that come up. I'm not really anticipating that we will come to any final conclusion on May 15th. It's not impossible that that could happen, but I'm not, I think more likely than not that we will talk about a lot of alternatives, get more information, maybe narrow the list of alternatives down somewhat. I am hopeful that we will be able to come to a conclusion, a final decision, at our first June meeting. And in that regard, Kay, I would ask that we schedule another committee of the whole meeting for 6 o'clock on the first, the first June meeting, whatever date that is?
June 5th.
June 5th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we do that then?
Yes.
You know, we're going to need to move fairly quickly, starting with the, the May 15th meeting, quite possibly. So I think any such meetings we would have from here on out would be not Finance Committee meetings, but committee of the whole meetings, because all seven of us should be involved from, from this point forward. I would say, if I could take a couple of minutes, that as I have talked to people and heard from people via email, and thought about this topic over the last few weeks since it was first brought up, one thing I found in, in being on council for 12 years is that with some of these major topics that come up, that sometimes it's better to purposely try not to make up your mind real early as to what you think you should do, and just sort of let the topic percolate in your mind for a while. If you don't get too set of a position early, sometimes your thinking changes a bit along the line, or you start to take things into account that you hadn't thought of initially. Some things become more impressive or less impressive as a little bit of time goes by. So I purposely haven't come to any conclusion in my mind of saying, okay, this is what we ought to do to raise the money that we need. One of the things I spent some time doing in the last few weeks was thinking about, what are the characteristics of good options that might be available for us? As opposed to just picking options, what am I looking for in an option that makes it better or worse than another option? And if I could, just for food for thought, you know, you may come up with, with your own list that might be different than mine, or you want to add or subtract something from it. But four things I thought of that are, that would be ideally characteristic of, of good alternatives. One would be something that is relatively broad-based. I think if we have an option that affects a lot of people to a minor extent, that that is generally more favorable than an option that affects a lesser number of people, but to a greater extent. You know, sort of, it's, I know it's painful, but sort of spread the pain around in small amounts as, as best we can. Secondly, I think we should be looking for things that only benefit the general fund, not things that benefit all of our funds or the city's situation in particular. The various items that Brian Bouchong listed as being the source of our problem here, the loss of state money and the local government fund, the loss of the estate tax, the federal cable franchise fee going away, and there were a couple of other things, the municipal court revenue. All those things only affected the general fund. So I think our solution should almost exclusively benefit the general fund as well, and not the other funds. And that does have implications in particular for, for example, a tax increase. If we were to consider raising the income tax, there are other reasons I probably, I don't like that option very much, but the main thing that comes to mind is 5/8 of the money wouldn't go into the general fund. You know, I don't know if everybody in the audience realizes that or not, but I think all my colleagues on council do, that of the 2% income tax collected, only 37 and 1/2%, 3/8 of that money goes into the general fund. And by focusing our solutions on the general fund, I think that probably makes, makes something like a tax increase not a very good option. A third thing that came to mind was that some of the options, both ones that Brian listed and a couple others that have come up since then, are going to be more noticeable to the average taxpayer and resident than other options. Some options just sort of smack you in the face, you know? You've got to write a check that you didn't used to have to write. There are other options that may be more seamless. People end up in total paying more money, and a little bit here and a little bit there adds up, but there are some options that I think most taxpayers would barely notice, if at all. And I think that would be a, a good thing, to the extent that we can do that. And the last thing I thought of, just, just came up in my mind a couple of days ago, is we're looking for that happy medium where we raise enough money, but not too much money. We're not trying to raise so much money that the city won't ever have any budget problems again, or won't have to be conservative in how we spend our money and so forth. But we also don't want to, don't want to cut it so close that a year or two from now, you folks are back here doing the same thing again. Won't be any skin off my back, I won't be here. But I think it would be kind of foolish to look for just a short-term solution. I think we're, we've got a structural problem with the general fund. It's not a temporary one- or two-year thing, and I think we need something that corrects this structural problem, not just a one- or two, two-year solution. I would, I don't want to go into detail, but I know in Brian's presentation, I was looking back at his slides yesterday and today, and he kind of focused as a target the amount of money that we're, we have as a shortfall in this year's budget. If you remember, that was about $627,000. Actually, that focuses on the short term, you know? Okay, if we, if we had $627,000 more, we'd break even this year, but what about next year? What about the year after? I think the structural deficit is actually a bit larger than that. I will wait till May 15th to talk more about it, but I would suggest to you that we need to raise more like $800,000 to $1 million a year, rather than $600,000. I think there's a, there's a tendency to cut it too close. We might, if we thought the, the target was 627, we might come up with some alternatives that would raise maybe $500,000. And we'd say, ah, that's close enough, you know? That's, let's, none of these options are, are, are things that we want to do. We'll, we'll just stop there. Well, I think if we do that, that you folks will be here a year from, two, from now having the same discussion again. So that, that's the things I, the things I'm looking for in alternatives. I don't think we'll come up with things that, whatever, if there's some combination of alternatives, that they'll all meet every one of those four criteria. But the closer the, we get to that, I think probably the better off we'll be. So please, you know, give it a lot of thought between now and May 15th, and we will have that meeting and see how far we can go that night. But we, we should make some, we should make some good progress on May 15th, I think.
Bob, let me just comment that those are good perspectives. I appreciate that. The only specific thing you mentioned was that you didn't like the idea of the income tax, and I just want to say, I'm not sure I want an income tax increase, but for me, that's not off the table, so that, and that, there might be some broader structural aspects of, of where the income tax applies and some other things we might discuss later. But I think that, that for me is still on the table.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate your comments and your leadership in this particular matter. I look forward to the meeting on the 15th, and also the one in June, because I think that obviously we all understand the importance of this discussion. And I think you hit it right on the, right on the head, that this is a structural issue that, that really needs to be dealt with. I really appreciate that sentiment. Are there any additional council committee reports this evening? Okay, we move forward with the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3664 for first reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Wooster Street and Dunbridge Road. Resolution Number 3665 for first reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Wooster Street and Campbell Hill Road. Excuse me, Mr. President, I, are you not going to be here on the 15th?
No, I will be here on the 15th.
You'll be back, okay? Because I know these need to get...
Sure.
...other readings, so I'm just checking. Resolution Number 3666 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing amended housing revolving loan fund program policy and procedures manual. Resolution Number 3667 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended community development block grant housing policy and procedures manual. Ordinance Number 8584 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's preliminary legislation for the installation of marked crosswalks and other related equipment along East Wooster Street between Manville Avenue and Campbell Hill Road and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 8585 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of municipal equipment not needed for any municipal purpose. Ordinance Number 8586 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to complete the terms and conditions of the property purchase agreement with R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8586 its second and third reading.
Second.
Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8586.
Ordinance Number 8586 for second and third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to complete the terms and conditions of the property purchase agreement with R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8586.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8586. This time, I move to adopt Ordinance 8586.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just comment that I always be paying attention when we give expedited readings to items and apply the emergency clause, but since this is going through the Board of Public Utilities, that gives me great confidence that it's been fully considered. And I know Mr. Marsh and Mr. O'Connell are very diligent about all their dealings, and so I'm, I'm happy to go along with this.
Thanks, Bruce. I would just emphasize that the reason for the expediting processing on this ordinance is to hopefully facilitate a pending economic development process. Are there any other comments? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8586 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8587 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the leasing of municipally-owned property for agricultural purposes. Legislation for second reading. Resolution Number 3663 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant as authorized by the USDA Forest Service.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we give Resolution 3663 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3663.
Resolution Number 3663 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant as authorized by the USDA's Forest Service.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we adopt Resolution 3663.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3663 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8581 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT winter contract for road salt and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8581 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8581.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I need to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance Number 8581 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT winter contract for road salt and declaring an emergency.
Now, Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for...
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8581.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt the Ordinance 8581.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?[1689.72] Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. Ordinance 8581 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8582 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2379 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8582 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8582.
Ordinance Number 8582 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2379 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8582.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8582.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8582.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I wanted to say a thing or two here. Uh, this is a contract year, as we all know, for all five of the unions that, uh, we deal with, uh, with the city. And this is the first of the five to come up and, and reach a settlement. And, um, uh, we're having the emergency clause in the third reading tonight because if I, if I understand the legal, legalities correctly, if we didn't do anything, uh, from, after 30 days from the time the union signed the contract, it would just automatically go into effect anyway. And we're getting very close to that 30 days, so that is the justification for the third reading of the emergency clause. But probably more significantly, there might be a few people in the audience that are wondering, uh, what the terms of the contract are or why we're willing to give raises to our employees and, when we're in the midst of having a, somewhat of a financial issue. And, uh, the contract calls for raises of a percent and a half this year, 2% next year and 2 and a half percent the following year. So it's a typical three-year contract. The average raise is 2%. We have done a variety of things in recent years as we've had various budgetary problems. I think when times were good, we tried to give our employees generally 3% raises. We've had a couple of years since I've been on council where our employees didn't get raises and we may, we might have given them a, a one-time bonus that didn't add to their salary base in lieu of raises. But in this situation, um, a couple of things, um, we have a financial issue with the general fund, no doubt about it. We don't have a crisis. We have a problem, not a crisis. In light of the fact that we're, we're at that stage, I, I still think it's appropriate to, uh, enter into agreements with our employees and try to give them at least some sort of a raise, even though it might be a bit less than is, is, is typical. I think if you want to keep, uh, the way public employees work, they kind of expect to get an annual, a modest annual increase each year. And they know from time to time, there may be some sort of crisis that prohibits that from happening. But if it doesn't happen on a fairly regular basis, I think your employees lose their motivation to do their very best when they come to work. They may seek out other employment. We may have difficulty retaining people. So I think we have an, an obligation, uh, to try to, uh, do something for our employees, even in times that are not ideal. And I think 2% raises across the board for, for three years are a, a very appropriate number for the situation we're in right now. And, um, I, I think that's well justified, even though we have the problem that we're going to be dealing with on May 15th with the general fund revenues. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of this contract and the raises included in them, um, even under the current circumstances.
Thank you, Bob. I'm also supportive of this, uh, contract agreement. I do think that it's important for us, um, as we're able to, uh, continue to, um, reward our employees for their hard work. And I think this also has a, an impact on the city's ability to, um, attract, uh, future job candidates and also important for retaining the quality of, of employees that we have on board. So again, I am supportive and I also think it's worth noting that, uh, the, the pay raises are, are modest. At the same time, over the last several years, our employees, like probably everybody else, have, have been facing increases, um, in healthcare costs, um, that are resulting in, uh, you know, increases in deductibles and other out-of-pocket expenses. So I think that, uh, again, in, in trying to make things, uh, equitable and somewhat palatable for our employees, it's important that we do what we can, when we can, and I feel like we're doing that with, with this contract. Are there any other comments? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8582 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8583 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contract for odor control improvements at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8583 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8583.
Ordinance Number 8583 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for odor control improvements at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8583.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8583 is adopted.
Ordinance Number Eight, uh, this is legislation for third reading. Ordinance Number 8575 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 30.110 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding the Income Tax Board of Review.
President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8575.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.[1654.86]